Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the council work session for Tuesday, June 17th. Could I please have a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Madam Secretary, could I please have a roll call?
Liam McCoy.
Here.
Medira Robinson.
Here.
Dustin Queenan.
Here.
Natalie Coulson.
Here.
Jasmine Griffin.
Here.
Rashad Bates.
Here.
Rebecca Smith.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We had an executive session this evening on personnel. Vice President Bates, do we have any announcements this evening?
Um, actually, just have one announcement for our Norristown Juneteenth Jubilee Street Festival on June 19th, this is Thursday, from 12 to 6 on DeKalb and Main Street.
Thank you. Council, any other additional announcements? All right, we have several presentations this evening. First up, we have an employee recognition opportunity for three employees, three, who were heroic in their actions. They recently intervened to help a missing person with Alzheimer's. And with that, I will turn it over to Administrator Lightner to provide some more information.
So, I believe Eric is here. Eric, can you... Earl, Earl, sorry, Earl. Come on, come on up, come on up. So, Earl, can you just tell us a little bit about what happened that day and the people that were with you, because we know what happened, but we think the public should also know what happened that day.
Um, I was cleaning inlets, and I was stopped by Riverfront. A man was disorientated and he didn't really know where he was. So, another fellow, another gentleman came up and suggested that we call the ambulance. So, I called the ambulance, and as I was waiting for the ambulance, sorry, Rashidi and Trey also stopped to make sure everything was okay, just for, I guess, support. And as I was getting ready to leave, the officer stopped me as well, and he said, you, showed me a picture of the guy, and he said, "Was this him?" I said, "Yeah." He's like, "Well, good job. You found a missing person and you saved a life."
So, we want to just let the public know that on a day-to-day basis, in the council on a day-to-day basis, our employees are out there. We started a program where we have Employee of the Month, and I would tell you, one of our officers took the time, five minutes, to write a long narrative, I'm not going to read the entire narrative to you, about what Earl and his partners did. They took the time out of that moment, and they recognized something was going on. They do this on a day-to-day basis, where they see situations happening, cars are driving past, they're out there on the streets, but this day, they really noticed, here he shows up, all right. So, both of them, they're out there and they show up, and they saw a person with dementia, and they stopped and they helped, just in enough time so when the police got there that they were able to support that. So, we wanted to recognize them. They did receive a certificate already from us, but council actually requested that they show up here to recognize them as well, and let you all know that you're appreciated, and the public should know that what you're doing, you saved a life, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They work for the Public Works Department, yes.
We're very grateful for the work you do for the municipality every day. But especially in taking the time to protect and make sure that, you know, a disoriented member of our community was well taken care of. So, thank you very much. All right, our next presentation for the evening is our Elmwood Park Draft Master Plan.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for your time. My name's Peter Simone, I'm with Simone Collins, located just down the hill on Lafayette Street. And tonight, I'm going to briefly give you a summary of where we are with the, with the master plan or at the draft stage. I believe we supplied a executive summary for council a couple of weeks ago. So, I'm just going to go through these slides quickly, we can come back if you have questions. Our schedule, we've been at this since last September. After tonight's presentation, we're going to have a public meeting next week on the 26th to present the hopefully final plan. We'll still take comments, make revisions, and then come back to council at a date of your, of your pleasure to, for you to either approve or adopt the plan, which is required by the funding agency, which is DCNR, Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. Public input, I mentioned we've been doing this for 10 months, we've had, next week will be the fourth public meeting. At the first three, we had over 90 attendees, which is great. We've had a bunch of committee meetings, key person and agency interviews, we did an opinion survey, almost 400 responses, and now we're in the draft plan review. This is a list of the interviews we've done, including Senator Capelletti and Representative Scott, and the school district, your fire and EMS, a whole bunch of agencies and folks who have been very helpful to the, to us, to the process. The concepts, I'm not going to go through this in detail, and this is online on the, on the municipal website, if you want to review it in detail, or you are members of the public. But we've taken a comprehensive look, we hope, at the park and the areas surrounding it. Of course, your acquisition of Roosevelt Field was a huge addition to the park, and there we've suggested a renovation of the new track, new all-purpose field, and a community center, which I'm going to talk about in a minute. The Veterans Plaza, which you see what it looks like today, is going to be a much more important space, so we've done some quick photo sims to show what the improvements could be, and this is going to be a much more important space. And then back there, on back left, you can see the new community center, phase one, what it might look like as that goes forward. So, this space becomes a very important, much more important space than it is, and the municipality gets to re-honor the veterans by a spruced-up park there, taking some liberties, put a little color on the tank, but again, it's just the concept. On Sterager Street, going across the river, there's some opportunities, we showed some new parking. One of the biggest concerns of the community was safety with streets and sidewalks and getting to the park. It was probably the number-one concern, which we heard from almost everyone who came there. So, we've got new sidewalks along Harding Boulevard and Sterager. You have an opportunity at Sterager, the bridge that was done by the county is very wide, and you could very easily retrofit it with bike lanes, so you can get protected bike lanes going across that bridge, connecting to the new state hospital site, where you're going to have 700 new residences hopefully in the near future, and really make that connection much safer and much more usable for bikes and pedestrians. You've got a historic shelter here that at some point, a bathroom was put in, this bathroom's not really used that much, it's hard to maintain, so we're suggesting removing that interior bathroom, restoring this, it's a great pavilion, great place for kids to hang out, because it's right on the street, it's very visible, it'll probably get rented for reunions and those types of things, so we think this is a great resource. And then, in, in the park, going towards the zoo, our plan did not include the zoo, of course, we have pavilions, replacement of trees in the park, some real basic park types of things, replacing that bathroom that we want to take out in the pavilion with a new bathroom near the new playground that you have. And also, really making a little more of a fuss, I'll say, as you come into the park, making it, creating gateways, and this is at Fornance Street, creating safer intersections, raising those intersections for pedestrians, so they're all ADA accessible and safer places into the park, and some signage, some gateway signage into Elmwood Park, because it's a, it's an awesome park, you know that, but we want to let all visitors know that. Also, we looked at trail connections to and from the park, working off of your existing plan to Arch Street, Greenway extending that, looking at creating a basin street, Spruce Street maybe as one-way pairs, that would allow you to keep all the parking, but have a bike lane on each street going one way, also connecting down Stamford Street down to the River Trail. So, a way to connect every, everybody to this park in non-motorized means, so it's a little easier to walk or bike there in addition to driving. The community center, of course, is a big part of the project and the program. Best place to put it out of the floodplain was at the Roosevelt Fields, that long rectangle represents the building. We worked with Seiler and Drury Architects here in Norristown, and also wall-over architects who are specialists in pool design, and they came up with a two-phase building, the first phase would be, would contain mainly the pool, this is the ground floor as we go up, this is the ground floor and there'd be parking, some of it will be covered initially, some of it will be open, and then a competition pool, six-lap pool for recreation and, and competition with some other multipurpose space, and then a second floor also with some multipurpose rooms. And this is a rendering of what it might look like, the first phase. This is looking from James Street, of course, from sort of near the Veterans Memorial, looking up at that corner where you still have what's left of the stadium structure. Phase two would expand that over what was open parking, and would include a gymnasium, multipurpose rooms, meeting rooms, offices, maybe a small catering kitchen. Again, this is an initial concept, you'd work out the details as you go forward with the building, a track above the gym, a small track, boxing gym maybe, so that would all be programmed. These are initial ideas, working with your staff and members of the public to come up with this. So, the report's available online, you can, you can go to the survey link that's on the meeting notice and offer comments if you'd like. And then, in terms of implementation, this is a big project for any community, as, as you know. And so, we've broken it down into four different categories, because generally, there'll be four different funding sources that you can go after to help you implement this. And this is a 20-year plan, this is a 10, 15, 20-year plan, you're not going to do this overnight. So, first of all, streets, sidewalk, safety, there are, you can see the funding sources, I won't read them all. Panoni has suggested a traffic circle at Sterager and Harding Boulevard, which I think everybody we've talked to thinks it's a pretty good idea to make that intersection safer, but also sidewalks and trails, so there are funding sources for that. For the improvements themselves in the park, again, things like trees, pavilions, maybe a misting station, some fishing piers along the creek, improvements to the park, floodproofing the Powell Building. Originally, the thought was, well, should we get rid of the Powell Building? But no, it's, it's a great building, and Seiler and Drury came up with some concepts, how you could floodproof the ground floor, remove the sheet rock, just have tile or masonry, so if it does get flooded, you get very minimal damage, get the utilities off that ground floor. So, that has certain funding sources. And then, the community center, which is the biggest part of this, we've broken it into two phases. Phase one, you can see there, building phase one is about a $14 million project, almost $15 million. As you know, the county's already committed $5 million to this project, so you're off to a great start. There are other funding sources that you can look at, maybe with that or after that, the fields and the track improvements could follow, which is about a $4.5 million project. And then, the second phase of the building is about almost $11 million, based on our estimates. So, these are big projects for any community, but I think if you take a, a phased, methodical approach to these things, these, these things can eventually get done. And then, the regional connection, some of those trail improvements are pretty simple, paint signage on existing roads, we're not creating new trails, it's just using existing roads to the best advantage to create those multi-modal connections. So, this is where we are. The next meeting, as I said, next week, after that, we'll be making final revisions. We wanted to make sure we came in front of council to see if you have questions and comments, and certainly, we can, I can try to answer questions tonight, or you can send them to us, however you'd like to do that. We still have time to, to make changes, we're not in a rush to finish this, but I think we're pretty close. And then, implementation, we've talked to Mr. Lightner and, and Ms. Simone about, you know, having a phased sort of grant strategy to start to go after this over a long term, so I think those are probably the next steps. So, with that, I'll, I'll close and encourage people to come to the meeting next week, and happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? I would just add, like to add a comment, especially as you have the meeting for next week up there, and you mentioned the survey that's open. I've been to several of the public meetings so far, and the, the designs you presented have always been impressive and very exciting, and something I want to see here. But the comment I want to make is that I am impressed that every time I see the design come back again, you've incorporated something that somebody has said at the meeting. So, for example, between the first and second, I think parking and direction of traffic flow down the residential street was a big topic, and by the second meeting, there was a solution that was really addressing that. And so, while we have a large group of public in the room, and you have the next public meeting up on the screen, I just want to comment that I appreciate how thoughtfully you're taking in the public's feedback at these meetings.
Yeah, and thanks, and I, you know, I have to give credit to the people who've come to the meetings. I mean, they've come up with, I hate to admit it, they've come up with the best ideas in this process, really, so it's, it's been important.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Oh, Councilman McCoy.
Yes, I just want to acknowledge the work that you're doing, it is phenomenal. I just had a question in regards to, are you guys planning on putting up traffic signals or safety signals, or even speed bumps around the park area?
Yeah, we're suggesting along Harding Boulevard, some raised pedestrian crossings, so that, not really a speed bump, it's more like a, a raised table, so that you have to slow down, but if you're going 15 or 20 miles an hour, you can go past it. I mean, we, a lot of residents have complained about speeding on Harding Boulevard, so we think that's important. The other thing, and again, it's buried in the master plan, we've, and there's a cost for this, we've shown curbs along that grass median, because people park there and ruin the grass, and if you put planting, so little things like that can start to make a difference. Some places, we have stairs where we couldn't do a ramp to come across that island at a couple of crossings, so, and, and at a few locations, like at Sterager, at the, at the park side of the bridge where that crossing is, we suggested a rapid flashing beacon, so that when a pedestrian or cyclist is crossing, it can go automatically off, and the driver knows, watch out, there's somebody in the intersection. So, yes, all those things are part of that street piece of it, yeah?
Awesome, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Next up, we have our MS4 ER7 update from Panoni.
Okay, thank you, Council. So, I'm here, every year, the DEP requires us to give an update to, really, on behalf of the municipality, to the public, about the MS4. Currently, the municipality is under a permit, the permit will be ending this year, we'll actually be going into a new permit cycle next year. I will get into a little bit more, though, in the bullet points, but we're here, we just want to make sure that the bullet points that you should have in your packet, get on the record, we want to make sure that it gets into the meeting minutes, so then we can give that to the DEP and let them know that we at least discuss this annually at a, at a meeting. So, some of the bullet points, I do want to go over a few of them, though, just real quick. Like I said, the, the permit, there's a current permit for the municipality, it will expire, we'll have to give a, a progress report September 30, 2026, but then, there's going to be a new permit that Panoni will submit, a notice of intent, October 1st, 2026, it will start, and then it will end September 30, 2031. I do want to bring up that actually, the, the stormwater authority has been, every year, we have been trying to make improvements to the drainage in the municipality. So, last year, they had several projects that they've replaced some stormwater piping to help the drainage. We're also working with them, this year, we have three other locations to help with the drainage in the area. And then, we also have, like, Public Works, they're jet, cleaning the piping, cleaning the inlets and all, so they're also helping to alleviate any drainage within the, within the municipality. Another thing I want to bring up is that the municipality received a $10,000 grant from the American Water Charitable Foundation through collaboration with the Pennsylvania Resources Council. So, they want to, they want to have two workshops this year. Actually, one is on June 24th, 2025, and another on July 10th, 2025. You have to register for this workshop, but at this workshop, PRC is going to give a 55-gallon Camel Hump-style rain barrel, and they'll give out 75 of them. If they were to give out all 75 of those rain barrels, they anticipate that almost 1.2 million gallons of water would actually not go into the waterways of Norristown. And the, the one other thing, the last thing that I want to mention as part of, like, the permitting, right now, the DEP looks at PRPs, the Pollution Reduction Plan, which tries to reduce pollutants into the streams. Now, with this new permit, they want to go into the, what's a volume management plan, which is now to reduce the volume. So, Panoni will work with the DEP, the municipality, to try to come up with this volume management plan, we'll have two years to get that completed and submitted to the DEP. And then, on the third year, though, based on what we come up with, they would have to then construct that, maybe like a, a basin or something like that, to reduce the volume, but we would then, on the third year, have to have that constructed. So, that's why I want to basically bring up on these bullet points, make sure that it gets onto the record, gets in the meeting minutes. If anybody has any questions, hopefully I can answer any of them.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Yes, I have a question. Thank you so much for the presentation, and I know some of this is on the agenda, but just so that everyone in the room is clear, I don't want to assume that everyone knows what these acronyms are, so perhaps, if you could, could you just explain, could you just name for us what MS4 is?
Yeah, MS4 is Municipal Separate Stormwater System. So, that permit, basically, what we're trying to do is improve the quality of our waterways.
Awesome, and it sounds like a lot of that reporting is to the DEP, and I just want to, just again, not assume that everyone knows what that is, if you could just define that for us.
Yeah, the Department of Environmental Protection.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
If you, Council, any other questions? My question is a dumb one, but could you please tell us when they say that we have to manage volume, like, we literally have to begin to think about ways to have less stormwater runoff into the river? That's what that means?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so like I said, the PRP, we're trying to reduce pollutants, this new cycle permit, they want us to try to basically hold back water, whether it's in a basin, and we would like to try to get it into the ground, but if we could just hold it back and then hold back those peak flows, we don't want everything to kind of come out of basins and everything go into the streams all at the same time, we want to make sure that we hold back, and they're not all timed at, at the same time, peak flows. We want to hold that back into some kind of a best management practice.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is response to questions from our last meeting. Mr. Lightner?
At this time, we don't have any. Last time, it was just more statements, no questions.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, we do. All right, Lita Gibson?
Okay, basically, I was just here to see if I have any recourse in the action of something that occurred to me, I didn't know where to go, and it was suggested that I come to council. What happened was, on May 27th, a search warrant was served on my home. I got a phone call prior to saying that a search warrant was going to be served, could you open the door? Which I did, I went downstairs, opened the door immediately, and I'm like, a search warrant for what? I work from home, I'm home all the time, it's just me, my granddaughter, and currently, my nephew is staying there with me. So, they didn't tell me what this search warrant was for, they didn't show me this search warrant. I was fully cooperative, my granddaughter and a friend of hers were downstairs, they came outside, they asked me if anyone else was in the house, I said, yes, my nephew was upstairs on the third floor in the back bedroom, fully cooperative. So, they came in and they did everything. The reason that I'm here is because they broke down a door, which I didn't feel it was necessary. I, I let them in, we fully cooperated, and when I wanted to see about getting reimbursement or if anything was going to be done with regard to the door, I spoke to like four different detectives, everybody's telling me, well, we have to see what Norristown's going to do. Then, somebody else said, we have to see what Montgomery County's going to do. Then, I was told that a detective was going to come by with a hammer or something and see what he could do. And, and I just basically wanted to know, because it's not just a matter of replacing the door, like, I guess they used a battering ram, and prior to that, they had asked me, did I have a key for this door? And I said, no, but you can unlock it from the inside, I said, all you have to do is just turn the locks. So, it's like the door frame, I brought a couple pictures if you wanted to see them. The door frame has to be replaced, the door, the locks and everything, and to be honest, I really can't afford to just do all that, so I was just trying to see if there's any kind of restitution or help that I could get, or if you could point me in a different direction. I read something about victim services, which, even though I may feel like a victim, I don't think I was the victim in this case. And then, after the fact, I did find out that the search warrant was regarded with a very bad crime, it was with regard to a young man that had gotten murdered, and that my nephew was supposedly friends with somebody that was involved with that. But I didn't have anything to do with it, nobody in my household had anything to do with it, nobody, they didn't find anything in my house, they, they totally looked through everything, they even went up into a attic that, I haven't been up there since the 80s, you know what I mean? So, I, I was just trying to see if there was anything that I could get some assistance with.
All right. Thank you, so, I'm going to point you in the direction, I'm going to point you in the direction of Chief Angelucci, right behind you. He'll talk to you, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Derek Johns, Director of Community Engagement for SRC, Sustainable Formula Change. Just giving an update of what we've been doing in the community, we had Family Day about two weeks ago, also, about three days ago with Will McCoy, we did a 50-for-50, had 50 men and invited 50 kids. One of the problems with that was, a lot of the kids was afraid to come to certain territory in Norristown, which is very concerning and alarming, because they're afraid that they go in certain part of Norristown, they would get killed. So, I went to each individual blocks and talked to those kids. It's alarming that violence that's uptaken in this town, and, oh, we have to do something about it ASAP. I mean, it's getting sad, especially, these are babies, 15-year-old, 13-year-old, running around with ski masks on, as if this is a war zone, it's really the suburb. So, we're here to talk to council, our founder, Tyree Wallace, will be speaking next, and he will give up a plan of what we have, and, oh, we could do, but so much, it's up to the community, it's up to the parents, up to council members, Will McCoy, taking a step, having these meetings with these kids, did a 50-to-50, should have been more people, police officers should be there, everybody have to take part, just can't come after the act, we have to get involved. Thank you.
Tyree Wallace? Tyree Wallace?
Thank you, and good evening, council members. I want to start by saying thank you to Will McCoy for what you did at 50 to 50, bro. That was monumental. Thank you, bro. My name is Tyree Wallace, and I am the CEO and the founder of SRC, which stands for Systemic Reformative Change, a 501(c)(3) and (c)(4) nonprofit organization that was born right here in Norristown. I stand before you today on behalf of the young men of this borough, especially the young black men of this borough, because we have an urgent and a unique opportunity to invest into their potential instead of paying the price for our neglect. Every summer, our community braces itself. It braces for headlines, for violence, for funerals. Norristown does not have to continue to live like this. We know and research confirms, excuse me, that where there is disinvestment, violence follows. When schools are underfunded, when streets are unsafe, when neighborhoods are neglected, violence follows. But the opposite is also true. Where there is opportunity, where there is structure, where there is hope, young people rise irrespective of their race, their gender, their sexuality, or their socioeconomic background. That is why we are here today asking for your support to fund the SRC's workforce development plan. This program gives young men in Norristown not just something to do this summer, but it gives them someone to become. We're talking about paid, structured work rooted in community pride, cleaning up neighborhoods, learning skilled trades, attending leadership workshops, and receiving mentorship from men who knows what it means to fall and get back up. These are men who are all once justice-impacted and are now committed to serving and fixing the systems that failed them. From January of April, January to April of this year, we engaged more than 350 Norristown residents through our block cleanups. We cleaned up entire streets, connected neighborhoods to services, and brought community back to the block. But we want to do more. With your funding, we'll employ young men this summer to expand these efforts, beautifying over 60 blocks, engaging 1,500 residents, and planting the seeds of long-term transformation. Council, we are at a fork in the road. We could either keep responding to violence after it happens, or we can get in front of it. The workforce plan, it is not charity. I don't do charity. It's strategy, it's prevention, it's investment. Our young men deserve an investment. Finally, they are watching us. They need to know that their city believes in them. They need to know that we believe in them enough to give them a chance. Let's not wait for a...
James Waters?
Evening, council. How are you all doing? I'm dressed this way because of this David and Goliath thing that I'm going to try with the flooding issue. I am a flood victim over and over again on Hamilton Street, so you can see why my secret agenda is. And in order for council to understand how long I've been into this, I gave council president the example of when we had a Times Herald, multicolor, 1997, when we started going after the problems with the pollution and the schmuckle. And what it boils down to is, we've come up to the foul state of Pennsylvania waterways. And interesting enough, the DEP guy didn't leave because it's his fault. I believe that I can prove that the reason for the 75% of the impaired streams in Montgomery County and the damage that's done to the municipality because of uncontrolled stormwater from upstream. Now, the documentation that I have goes back to 1982, when the DE, I think they called it DER back then, they got together and formed this stormwater management for the Stony Creek, and they never did nothing with it, they got the paperwork. So the thing is, is that what it boils down to is, the letters that went for 50 years through the, that report, Integrated Water Quality Report, that reported the foul state of Pennsylvania waterways, for 50 years, it went to the EPA under the Clean Water Act. Now, why didn't they do anything? You know what I'm saying? How am I doing? Oh, good. All right, now, the thing is, is that I did a study previous to the Stony Creek that go back to 1991. By 1992, a group of us got together, and the Times Herald again did a muddy water mystery about a stormwater basin that wasn't working. The documentation here, and it's also, it's on YouTube, proven how incompetent the DEP was. So if their mission statement states that they're going to create a cleaner environment, they certainly failed. Now, I really don't know to go with this. I mean, this is uncharted territory. I'm usually trying to get mattresses picked up off the streets, so thank you for that. We got another one, 1100 block of West Main Street. But I did learn something new, that apparently the resident or whatever doesn't know when bolt pickup is. So I don't know how long that mattress is going to lay out there on the sidewalk in 1100 block of Main Street. I like the master plan for the park, but you know, I got a lot of master plans, and they never did anything with them.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. I like your 1997 picture.
I need to ask you, first, I want to thank you for limiting the sign on Beach of Cone. Okay, 20 minutes after you guys took that sign down, there were parked in already people. They were waiting for that spot, okay? I hope it stopped the trash in my truck, I hope they stop down now. Another thing, I got neighbors, they're a bunch of animals, okay? They make a noise till 1:00 in the morning, they're sleeping daytime, they're making noise at nighttime. And then they got a kid, he's sitting on the floor, and kick the doors. And my wife is asleep, and she can't go to sleep because of this kid kicking the doors. And then he goes outside, the pension don't give a damn, they go outside, open everybody's screen doors. The chief knows about it, a lot of the cops know about it, because we call the cops on that. But still, you guys have to do something about it. Then they got social work coming in every, twice a week. And then they went out, spent $25,000 on a vehicle, I mean, they can't afford the food to buy stuff, they have to get social work, okay? And they block the streets, they block the driveway, they don't care. I don't know why they have to get social work. Now, they start on family four, now they got family nine in this house, okay? Keith knows about it, the co-enforcement. Now, are you guys going to do anything about these guys? I mean, I don't know if you guys like your neighbors. When you go to bed nighttime, you have to get up at 5:00 in the morning like my wife does, twice a week, because we retire, and she can't go to sleep until they go to sleep, because they make a noise. Can you do me a favor, send them a letter, I'll give you the address. Keith knows the address, the chief knows the address, okay? It's an 846 Coon Street, you guys send the letter, maybe send it to the landlord, even the landlord will call me, and I'll tell them, they don't give a damn. I mean, I've been living a street and a house for 53 years, never had a family property, them pigs, animals, that's what they are. And then they kick them out, go down my basement door, and put the drain cover off, turn it over. Almost got my foot stuck on top of them. The pension don't care, he come on top of the hood of the car, he jump up and down, as far as you should look at him. They don't care, okay? I know my time is up. I hope you guys are going to do something about it, okay? I mean, Norristown's got to get straight, never was this bad in Norristown, never. It's getting worse and worse every day. I hope I should clean it up. I'm turning now.
All right, that's it. There is one announcement that we forgot to make. We invite you to please stay after the meeting and join us outside to raise the Juneteenth We have several appointments this evening. Our first up is there a motion to approve the appointment of Nadine Hitch to serve on the Civil Service Commission?
So move second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy?
Aye.
Nadia Robinson?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Natalie Colson?
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye. Next up, we have a resolution appointing Chris Lattimore as the Zoning Enforcement Inspector. Is there a resolution number on that one? Is there a motion to appoint Chris Lattimore as the Zoning Enforcement Inspector?
So move second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy?
Aye.
Nadia Robinson?
Aye.
Dustin Queenan?
Aye.
Natalie Colson?
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin?
Aye.
Rashad Bates?
Aye.
Rebecca Smith?
Aye, the ayes have it. Chris, we're going to swear you in. I'm going to... Okay. We will do the swearing in another night. Next up, we have the Administration of the Oath of Office to probationary police officers
Okay, ready to repeat after me? I say your name.
I'm sorry, could I just have you just rotate to the right?
Oh.
You're right. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Very good.
Okay, you ready? Okay. I just want to make sure. You get that picture? I, your name.
I, Alexander Wharton.
Do solemnly swear?
Solemnly swear.
That I will support?
I will support.
Obey and defend?
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And that I will enforce the laws?
I will enforce the laws.
Of this Commonwealth?
Of this Commonwealth.
And the ordinance within of Norristown?
And the ordinance of Norristown.
And that I would discharge the duties?
I would discharge the duties.
As my office of a police officer?
As an officer, police officer.
For the Municipality of Norristown Police Department?
For the Municipality of Norristown Police Department.
With honor and fidelity?
With honor and fidelity.
I do further swear?
Further swear.
That I will uphold?
I will uphold.
Obey?
Obey.
And enforce the law?
And enforce the law.
Without consideration?
Without consideration.
To a person's race?
Person's race.
Color?
Color.
Sets?
Sex.
Religion?
Religion.
Creed?
Creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age?
Age.
National origin?
National origin.
Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap?
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
And there you are, sworn officer, congratulations. Put your hand on the bar and raise your right hand. Ready to repeat after me? I, and say your name.
I, Jacob Drummer.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America?
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth?
The Constitution of the Commonwealth.
Of Pennsylvania? The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
The Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And that I will enforce the laws of the Commonwealth?
That I will enforce the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinance of Norristown?
And the ordinance of Norristown.
And that I would discharge the duties?
That I would discharge the duties.
Of my office as a police officer?
Of my office as a police officer.
For the Municipality of Norristown Police Department?
For the Municipality of Norristown Police Department.
With honor and fidelity?
With honor and fidelity.
I do further swear?
I do further swear.
That I will uphold?
I will uphold.
Obey?
Obey.
And enforce the law?
And enforce the law.
Without consideration?
Without consideration.
Of a person's race?
Person's race.
Color?
Color.
Sets?
Sex.
Religious creed?
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation?
Sexual orientation.
Age?
National origin?
National origin. Ancestry?
Ancestry.
Handicap?
Handicap.
And/or disability. And congratulations, you are now sworn in.
Judge, we still need you.
All right, so repeat after me. I, Natalie Colson?
I, Natalie Colson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
The Constitution of the United States, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown?
The Home Rule Charter of the Municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Norristown?
And the laws of Pennsylvania and the Municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties of my office?
I will discharge the duties of my office?
As councilmember, fourth district?
As councilmember, fourth district?
For the Municipality of Norristown?
For the Municipality of Norristown.
With honor and fidelity?
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold, obey, and enforce?
I will uphold, obey, and enforce?
The laws of Pennsylvania?
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the Municipality of Norristown?
And the Municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration?
Without consideration.
Of a person's... Of a person's race.
Of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, Councilwoman Coulson. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I would just like to thank, so I'd just like to thank everyone who has supported me along the way. All of my friends, family, everyone. I really appreciate it. I have some big shoes to fill and I, and I just want everyone to know that I'm excited to serve the fourth district and work with everyone within the municipality. So thank you all again. I appreciate it.
And now we'll do the oath of office for Councilwoman Jasmine Griffin.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Home Rule Charter.
The Home Rule Charter.
Of the Municipality of Norristown.
Of the Municipality of Norristown.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And the laws of Pennsylvania.
And municipality of Norristown.
And municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
I will discharge the duties of my office.
As councilmember at large.
As councilmember at large.
For the Municipality of Norristown.
For the Municipality of Norristown.
With honor and fidelity.
With honor and fidelity.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
The laws of Pennsylvania.
And the municipality of Norristown.
And the municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
Of a person's race.
Of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sets.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilwoman Griffin. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, so I also want to say thank you to everyone that supported me. As you saw, it's a lot of people. And I just want everyone to know that I'm gonna continue to stand for and with the people of Norristown and always have the people of Norristown, our community's best interest. So thank you so much.
Next up this evening, we have building and code compliance for consideration of HARB certificates of appropriateness. Mr. Gordon.
That have been approved by the board for your consideration for approval. We have 1126 West Derry Street, 1230 West Derry Street, 1337 DeKalb Street, 503 West Marshall, and 531 Stamford Street.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion for the HARB certificates of appropriateness for this month?
So move second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy.
Aye.
Madira Robinson.
Aye.
Dustin Queenan.
Aye.
Natalie Coulson.
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin.
Aye.
Rashad Bates.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have planning and municipal development. We have the public hearing to consider the approval of the proposed zoning text and proposed zoning map amendment to create a mixed-use overlay of the institutional zoning district, and approval of ordinance 2503 to amend the zoning text, and ordinance 2504 to amend the zoning map to create a mixed-use overlay of the institutional zoning district. Ms. Misane.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening. I'm back again with the same issue. As I had mentioned to you in the last meetings, that I will be coming back as we progress to change this zoning for the state hospital. The principal of PRDC, Mr. Tony Maris is here. Our planner, Valdez, is somewhere around. And we have worked hard on this mixed-use overlay and we've made sure that we followed each step as we're supposed to through the municipal planning code. If you recall, counsel, at your April 1st, 2025 meeting, a proposed zoning text amendment to create a mixed use was presented to you. You did approve that we advertised this zoning text amendment, and you did approve that we also advertised the zoning map amendment, which was done consequently. The notice of public hearing for the proposed text and map amendment was done, The Times Herald, on Friday, May 2nd, 2025, and Monday, May 12th, 2025. A revised version of the drafted ordinance was brought before you on May 6th, and you approved us to continue with the advertisement. So that was advertised on May 21st of 2025. On June 10th, the planning commission heard this proposed zoning text amendment, as well as the map. The three members of a seven committee did approve recommending this text and map change to you tonight. So unless you have any further questions, I would offer the exhibits to...
So what I would suggest, Ms. Misane. President Smith, is do we make a motion to open a public hearing?
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go ahead and mark some exhibits right now. M1 will be a copy of the advertisements of this in our newspaper general circulation. M2 will be a copy of ordinance 2503, which is the mixed-use overlay for the state hospital with attached exhibits. T4 will be the ordinance 2504, which will be the mixed-use overlay with the map change. T5 will be a notice, the public notice of the zoning overlay. T6 will be all the postings of the various properties required by the municipalities. Planning code in T7 will be a recommendation, I believe we have in the Montgomery County Planning Commission, as well as Ms. Misane referenced, our own local recommendation. So this is a public hearing for that. So what I would suggest is that if the applicant wanted to go ahead and say a few words, he could go ahead and do so. Counsel could ask any questions. The public can comment on what they heard. Then either counsel could continue the public hearing to a later date if they wanted more information, or close the public hearing and take action on the two proposed ordinances. Is that what planning is recommending?
Yes, we.
Okay, great.
Good evening, members of counsel. My name is Tony Maris. Been here a lot, as much as Jan on this subject, it seems. We've worked great with your staff, and compliments to your staff and your professionals through this. This is an iterative process. You're working through an existing zoning ordinance, making sure all the definitions and every term ties out. But the goal of this ordinance was to accomplish the vision that we started two years ago with our proposed concept plan in response to the RFP. And this ordinance is written to facilitate that development. Without this ordinance, this project could not proceed forward. The current zoning just does not allow this, so we have to do this. Importantly, this ordinance is written so that if there's ever more ground from the state that is given back to the municipality, this overlay can be applied to those sections of the former, or what would then be former state hospital ground as well. So your staff worked really well to make sure that this was, for lack of a better word, a living and breathing document, that it could evolve, that we thought about the uses that you want to see, attract the type of development that you want to attract, and all those considerations for all the rounds for the RFP. You've seen this plan multiple times. We've talked about this a lot. So really, if anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer them from our standpoint. Just as an update, we have finished our geotech investigation. We finished our topo and boundary. We're finishing the asbestos topo and boundary, which is a type of survey. And we are finishing the asbestos inspection on the building, even though we had it from the state. We have to do it for our own. So all those things are now in progress, and you will hopefully start seeing the master plan, I'm hoping by the end of this summer. My engineer happened to decide to stop by, so now I can put him on the spot. He's sitting in the back, back there, but... So, any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Seeing none, there's...
So if there are none, see if there's any public comment.
Is there any public comment on this particular item this evening?
Hey, if there's no public comment, I suggest a motion to close the public hearing. You had something else? A motion to close the public hearing?
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then what I would suggest, Madam President, is two separate motions. A motion to approve ordinance 2503, and then a motion to approve that ordinance 2504.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2503 to amend the zoning text for the institutional zoning district?
So move second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy.
Aye.
Madira Robinson.
Aye.
Dustin Queenan.
Aye.
Natalie Coulson.
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin.
Aye.
Rashad Bates.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye. The ayes have it. Ordinance 2503 is approved. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2504 to amend the zoning map to create a mixed-use overlay of the institutional zoning district?
So move second.
Could I have a roll call, please?
William McCoy.
Aye.
Madira Robinson.
Aye.
Dustin Queenan.
Aye.
Natalie Coulson.
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin.
Aye.
Rashad Bates.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye. The ayes have it. Ordinance 2504 is approved. Next up, we have a public hearing to consider ordinance 2502 for the vacation of Leidenberger Alley, and the request for counsel to approve ordinance 2502, vacation of Leidenberger Alley.
Thank you, Council President. I learned, I think it was yesterday, that we do not need a public hearing for this.
We actually don't. It was placed on the agenda, so it's no harm, no foul. But there is no need for a public hearing, but there were no objections to the vacation of the alley.
Correct. There were no objections from the public.
It was just the action on the ordinance. That's all. Yep.
As counsel will recall, you had approved the advertisement of this, of this vacating. We had the advertisement, even though it's not a public hearing, we did make it public. We did send the budding owners notification as well. And that is what is required in the MPC. I do believe we have a representative from the church this evening. Bishop German. Good to see you. And they're just asking for the property they had previously given to the municipality so that Leidenberger Alley could be rerouted. And when their plans did not go through for using that Leidenberger Alley, now they're asking for their property back just right next door to them. That's the Ebenezer Church, because I do recall, Councilwoman Coulson was asking me which church it was. It was Ebenezer Church. So that's, they're here tonight, and we are recommending you approve the property to be given back to the church.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2502 for the vacation of Leidenberger Alley?
So move second.
Could I please have a roll call?
William McCoy.
Aye.
Madira Robinson.
Aye.
Dustin Queenan.
Aye.
Natalie Coulson.
Aye.
Jasmine Griffin.
Aye.
Rashad Bates.
Aye.
Rebecca Smith.
Aye. The ayes have it. Ordinance 2502 is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have departmental reports, starting with Public Works.
Good evening, counsel. I'm going to be talking about what we've been doing for the past one month. We've been protecting our newly paved streets. Streets that were paved in the past five years, we've been crack sealing them. And we, we stopped crack sealing because the equipment, our crack sealing machine, dummy, had some issues, and we are working on it. They were trying to protect some newly paved street by crack sealing. We've been doing this for more than a month now. The next thing that we've been doing is actually patching pathos in some of our old streets. And we have issues with our patchwork machine now. Hopefully that will be fixed this week. So we've been able to patch more than 700 pathos in different locations before we started having the problem. The next thing we are doing is actually, I've been working with Pinoni, Public Works has been working with Pinoni, our city engineer, to actually design the street that we're going to be paving this year. There's $1 million for street paving, and I've been working with Pinoni to make sure that we can pave these streets. When we did our initial estimate, we ran into some budget issues. The budget was over by about $300,000. But we had to do a lot of things to bring it within budget. And if the council will remember, there was a negotiation I went with Keyhole, maybe three or four years ago, that they'd be milling our streets. So I put Keyhole. If they would mill our street for free, they've accepted. So that would save us about $400,000, just for the council to know. The next thing we are doing right now, that we have been cutting and trimming streets, trees, in most of our parks, our bridges, and then working with the police department about trimming streets in different parts of the city, so that their cameras could be able to catch what they want to catch without obstruction. So these are actually what we've been doing in the last month, and I'll be ready to answer questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presenting department will be building and code.
Evening again. Okay, a second there. It's alright, Kev. We can move on. Long meeting tonight. So this report is for, excuse me, March 1st till May 31st of this year. Permits issued and fees collected during that time are approximately $205,000. Other fees, they're not included in that amount. We collected approximately $203,000 on those. Our total fees for the year that were collected are $268,570. During this time period, we issued, excuse me, 1,460 violations, 500... 522 of those were for owner-occupied properties, and 938 were for rental properties. During this time, we also issued 917 quick tickets. Also, want to let you know, I know you're all familiar with it, but the See, Click, Fix system is the municipal reporting system where citizens can report many issues, not just to our department, but to all departments within the municipality. But during this time, our department responded to 230 citizens' concerns, and actually during that time, the total number was 362, so 64% of issues submitted from See, Click, Fix were directed towards the Building and Code Department. So as you can see, citizens are definitely using that to help us to improve conditions in Norristown and to report issues. During this time, we issued 167 property transfers, both commercial and residential. And lastly, we provided assists to other agencies during that time, 26 to the fire department, 16 to the zoning planning department, 12 to the public works department, 11 to the police department, three to other county agencies, and two to other outside agencies for a total of 70. Questions?
Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is listed as full department report. Gotcha. All right, right before we adjourn, just a reminder that we will be headed outside if you would like to stay and join us for the raising of the Juneteenth flag, and with that, I will, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned.